Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York Council hearing for the Committee on State and Federal Legislation, jointly with the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. If you wish to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Thank you for your cooperation. Chairs, we are ready to begin.
Gaveling in. Good afternoon. My name is Shauna Brayu, and I'm Chair to the Committee on State and Federal Legislation. I would like to first thank my colleague, Chair Velazquez, for working with me on this hearing today. Today, we'll be delving into the topic of student debt as a barrier to generational wealth. For many people across the country, the debt they incur after seeking higher education feels almost impossible to repay. For New Yorkers, it can at times be even more difficult with the cost of living continuing to rise. Our apologies, there's no audio on the stream. Mic test, mic test. Is our Zoom host getting our microphone test from the chambers? Once again, Zoom host, we're getting an audio feed. Once again, our Zoom host, do you hear us from the chambers?
I hear you now, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm gaveling in. This hearing has now commenced. Marjorie can go. Marjorie, you may begin.
Good evening, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for joining us today to discuss a problem that is plaguing so many of us nationwide. My name is Marjorie Velazquez, and I'm the Chair of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. Today's oversight topic of student debt as a barrier to generational wealth is a nuanced and layered topic. I say this issue is nuanced because while at the end of the day, the choice is to take out loans is made by prospective students. It feels like less of a choice when a college degree is presented as a prerequisite for making a livable wage. On average, people with a college degree earn 80% more than those with only a high school diploma. This greatly incentivizes students to attend college, even if it means going into debt. Many of these students are not properly educated on the consequences of taking out these loans and find themselves in situations where they are endlessly in a financial struggle. This is a cycle that can continue to perpetuate in later generations, and it is time to have a real conversation about how we can change this trend. Even as the current presidential administration attempts to give some partial relief to those that already really need it, continues to be challenged, indicating a long road ahead. In September of 2022, a report released by New York State Controls Office found that student loan balances in New York were 335% higher than they were in 2003, less than 20 years prior. Across the state, loans to finance educational expenses are the highest category of personal debt, second to only housing. As of August 2022, New York student loan borrowers owed a total of over $90 billion. Today, we're hearing from Intro 621 sponsored by Councilmember Ari Kagan, which will ban companies that charge a fee for student debt relief already provided by the federal government. These companies are preying on people in vulnerable positions, and there should be consequences for their predatory behavior. Additionally, I'm sponsoring Intro 366, which would hire the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection to report on public use of their financial empowerment centers and student debt distress in the city. Today, we are hoping to learn more about how these centers function and aid students so that we can ensure New Yorkers know of and have access to the tools the city offers them towards debt relief. I'd like to give a special thank you to my colleague Chair Shauna Brayu for joining me today, and I'd also like to thank committee staff for all their work putting this hearing together. I now turn it over to Chair Brue for his opening statement.
Good afternoon, Marjorie. Hope you're feeling better. My name is Shauna Brayu, and I am Chair to the Committee on State and Federal Legislation. I would like to first thank my colleague Chair Velazquez for working with me on this hearing today. As she just mentioned, today we will be delving into the topic of student debt as a barrier to generational wealth. For many people across the country, the debt they incur after seeking higher education feels almost impossible to repay. For New Yorkers, it can at times be even more difficult with the cost of living continuing to rise. We all know this can be an expensive city to live in. While my main priority is always improving the lives of New Yorkers, we cannot overlook just how widespread this issue is. While loans from private institutions are a large part of the equation, the federal government also plays a significant role. As it stands, the US federal government is the largest owner of student debt in the country. Rapid growth in the cost of schools has raised questions as to whether astronomical tuition can be really justified. The cost of tuition at a four-year public college or university has increased 31.4% from 2010 to 2020 alone. If we go back even further, after adjusting for inflation, tuition has increased 747.8% since 1963. This, coupled with the increasing requirement of a college degree from employers, has created a pressure on prospective college students to attend college or even graduate at any means necessary, or even graduate school at any means necessary, even if it means putting themselves tens or even hundreds of thousands of dollars in debt. As Chair Velazquez mentioned, today we will be hearing two bills. Intro 621, which aims to protect students from predatory lending and would arm them with options should they be taken advantage of. If passed, Intro 366 will allow us to gain more insight on the use of DCWP's Financial Empowerment Center so we can hopefully obtain more knowledge on how to best help those struggling to pay back their loans. I truly want those who are seeking higher education, whether for academic growth or career advancement, to be able to achieve their goals while having to dig themselves into a hole they cannot climb out of after they graduate, and that is why we're having this very necessary discussion today. I'd like to thank my colleagues that have joined us today, and that includes Christopher Marte, Krishnan, Bacher, Brewer, Ose, Kagan, and of course Velazquez, as well as the Legislative Division staff for their hard work on preparing for this hearing, Wyam and Jayshri. I will now turn it over to Councilmember Kagan for remarks on his bill.
Thank you very much, Chair Brayu and Chair Velazquez, for opportunity to talk about my bill introduction 621. As you heard already, it's a big issue nationwide, not just citywide. And this bill does not ban all businesses that offer services for students and their families, but creates parameters for businesses that offer these services. They will be required under this bill to provide a written disclosure stating that these services are available for free by contacting the Federal Department of Education or a borrower's loan service. So if they don't do this, first violation is between $500 fine, up to $2,000 fine. Second violation, up to $3,000 fines. So we need to stop this wrong practice when someone using the opportunity just to charge tons of money from unsuspected students or their families for services that are readily available even on the website. And as a journalist by trade, I wrote many, many times about the situations where all this information is publicly available. Of course, if someone, after receiving a written disclosure saying, "Oh, I don't have time for this. Please help me anyway." But at least the person is knowledgeable, the person knows what is happening. That's why this bill, in my opinion, is absolutely necessary, and I'm very grateful for this consideration, and we need to do everything possible to provide student debt relief in an honest manner. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Kagan, for your remarks. I would also like to recognize Councilmember Gennaro. I will now turn it over to our moderator, Committee Counsel Jayshri Ganapathy, to talk about some procedural items.
Thank you, Chair Brayu. Good afternoon and welcome. My name is Jayshri Ganapathy. I am Council to the Committee on State and Federal Legislation. Before we begin testimony, I want to remind everyone that is joining us via Zoom that you will be on mute until you are called to testify. I will be calling on public panel, public witnesses to testify after the conclusion of the administration's testimony and council member questions. So please listen carefully for your name to be called at that time. Councilmembers, you will be called on for questions after the full panel has completed their testimony. And please note, for the purposes of this virtual hearing, we will be allowing a second round of questioning. For public witnesses, once your name is called, if you are joining us via Zoom, a member of our staff will unmute you, and Sergeant Arms will give you the cue to begin. Otherwise, if you are in person, you can come up to the table and speak your testimony. I will now swear in the administration. We have today representatives from the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, and at this time, I will administer the affirmation. We have Carlos Ortiz, Assistant Commissioner of External Affairs, Andrew Schwank, Associate General Counsel, and Heidi Kabusora, Director of Policy and Research. And I apologize if I killed your name. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
I do.
Councilmember, you can go ahead. Yes, sorry. Please go ahead with your testimony.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Velazquez and Chair Brayu and members of the committees. My name is Carlos Ortiz, and I'm the Assistant Commissioner for External Affairs at the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. I'm joined by Andrew Schwank, our Associate General Counsel, and Heidi Kabusora, Director of Policy and Research. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on the impact of student loan debt on New Yorkers, as well as Introduction 366 relating to required reporting on the public use of financial empowerment centers and student debt distress, and Introduction 621 relating to companies that charge a fee for student debt relief already provided by the federal government. Student loan debt is one of the biggest financial issues affecting Americans today. Since the mid-1980s, the cost of colleges increased at twice the rate of inflation. At the same time, the number of students who have borrowed to fund their education has also risen, as did the average loan size. Currently, almost 44 million Americans hold a collective 1.6 trillion in student loan debt, making it the second-largest source of consumer debt in the United States. The majority of this debt is owed to the federal government. Today, the average federal student debt load is almost $38,000, with 15% of borrowers owing more than $100,000. DCWP has identified that one in every six New Yorkers has student loan debt, and more than half of those with a debt owe more than $20,000. Collectively, New York City residents owe more than $34 billion in student loan debt. In 2019 and 2020 surveys, one in five New Yorkers with student loan debt have been late with payments at least once in the previous 12 months. And 61% of respondents were concerned that they would need more than the standard 10-year period to fully repay their loan. Half of all respondents in those surveys with student loan debt indicated that their debt load had delayed or prevented them from making at least one major life choice, including buying a home or saving for retirement. Importantly, the tremendous burden of student loan debt is not shared equally by all New Yorkers. In fact, it is disproportionately felt by New Yorkers of color and those with low incomes. DCWP has worked diligently to understand and respond to the most pressing financial concerns facing New Yorkers in their everyday lives, including student loan debt. We do this in a few ways, such as by administering financial empowerment programs with contracted providers and enforcing consumer protection laws and rules. DCWP's Financial Empowerment Centers, available across the five boroughs, provide one-on-one financial counseling to New Yorkers, including for clients dealing with student loan debt. Our financial counselors receive in-depth training on student loans and how to guide clients through the complex and confusing process of repaying loans. Counselors and clients can check the status of their student loans, consolidate their student loan payments, or bring their student loans out of default. Across New York City, there are currently 26 Financial Empowerment Centers open for in-person services. Any New Yorker can schedule an appointment by calling 301 or visiting our website. So far in fiscal year 2021, DCWP financial counselors helped almost 7,000 New Yorkers with financial counseling, resulting in $2 million in savings. Increasingly, student loan debt has accounted for a larger proportion of all appointments, and we only expect the need for student loan-focused financial counseling to rise as the federal government's student loan payment pause expires in January 2023. I want to give one example of the impact that our Financial Empowerment Centers can have on New Yorkers struggling with student loan debt. Earlier this year, a client with $270,000 of student loan debt visited one of our Financial Empowerment Centers for an introductory meeting with a counselor. After the meeting, the counselor reviewed the client's financial situation, noticed that they had worked enough years in public service to be eligible for the forgiveness through the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Waiver, and reached out to outline how to consolidate their loans and apply. Shortly thereafter, the client was able to have the entire balance of their loans forgiven, and they are student debt-free. In the client's own words, "Without a visit to DCWP's Financial Empowerment Center, none of this would have happened, and their student loan debt is no longer weighing on me and my life decisions." In addition to our Financial Empowerment Centers, DCWP also takes actions against predatory businesses that mislead New Yorkers trying to obtain an education. For example, DCWP's recent investigation into the for-profit institution Berkeley College discovered that they engaged in aggressive and deceptive tactics during student recruitment, including lying to students about federal student loans, concealing costs from students until it was too late for them to withdraw, collecting debt that was not owed, and deceiving former students about re-enrollment. This past March, Mayor Adams announced an agreement with Berkeley to cease collection on $20 million in outstanding student debt and pay $350,000 in restitution to affected students. Turning to today's legislation, Introduction 366 will require DCWP to report on the public's use of Financial Empowerment Centers annually, as well as report annually on student debt distress in New York City. DCWP supports the intent of this legislation. Currently, we report aggregate data on the public use of our Financial Empowerment Centers through the preliminary mayor's management report and the mayor's management report. We welcome suggestions and would be happy to work with the council on improving our reporting. However, we have concerns about publicly distributing site-specific data concerning our Financial Empowerment Centers and data regarding contracted providers that deliver services at each site. Financial empowerment centers and the contracted providers vary in capacity, hours, location, operational history, and contractual obligations. Site-specific data points, such as number of New Yorkers served or data concerning financial outcomes, would paint an unfair and distorted picture without the context concerning relevant variables between providers and sites. With respect to reporting on student loan debt distress, DCWP has concerns that due to data privacy restrictions, the agency might not be allowed to share the data on public platforms, including open data. We would like to work with the council to tackle these issues by identifying specific data sets and outcomes that are feasible for any new reporting requirements. Moving on to Introduction 621, this legislation will require businesses that provide student debt relief services for a fee to provide customers with a written disclosure stating that these services are available for free by contacting the Federal Department of Education or a borrower's loan servicer. DCWP supports Introduction 621. New Yorkers suffering from student loan debt should not have to unwittingly pay for services that are available for free, and we look forward to discussing this bill further with the council. Thank you for calling today's hearing on an issue that deeply affects New Yorkers. As always, we greatly appreciate our partnership with the council, and we welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you for your testimony, and thank you to all of you for being here today and welcoming questions we have. My first question is, what is the mayor's office of financial empowerment's intake process for a first-time visitor to a financial empowerment center?
Thank you for the question, Chair. The Office of Financial Empowerment is in the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. We've been running that office since around 2008. Typically, what we would do for a prospective client that comes into a financial empowerment center is the counselor will sit down with them and do a needs-based assessment on their financial health. And that also includes identifying issues that might be of concern, such as debt or savings, but also identifying financial goals as well, for example, reducing the debt. So we work, we really create a personal relationship, the counselors, with the clients to reach, to understand and reach these goals for their financial health.
What is the process for following up with an individual after an intake appointment?
Well, for us, I mean, I think it's very important to have recurring appointments afterwards. It's not just one appointment and you're done. You really have to keep working with our counselor, and that includes direct communication with the counselor that you met with. I know in my personal experience with a financial counselor and folks in my family, we were able to get an email address and a phone number and talk to that counselor to set up appointments, but also touch base over a period of time. So it's definitely a very close relationship you have with your financial counselor.
Great. When you have an intake, what's the issue you find comes up the most in terms of the issues that folks come to the center with?
Well, I think the, you know, the three principal issues I think we're really working to identify is how to reduce debt, how to increase savings, and how to improve your credit. And I think those align with what we're hearing from our clients. Increasingly, I think as part of that debt reduction process, we do hear about student loan debt as well. I would say in this past September, about 10% of appointments, the clients identified student loan debt as something they wanted to tackle with their financial counselor. So I think those are the usual issues that clients bring to us there.
Got it. And you may not be able to answer this, because I don't think I said your question advance, but to the extent you know, what percentage of the folks who come through intake actually come back for a follow-up?
I think, I think we have a fair amount. I'm trying to find the data on like...
Yeah, it's okay if you don't have it.
Because we have clients, and then we report clients and the number of sessions as well. I think a fair amount, but I can follow up with that data if you...
All right, thank you. My second question, or second topic question, is what percentage of those who access financial services from Financial Empowerment Centers have student loan debt?
I don't know, sir, if we have the exact percentage that we have. I think typically when a client comes in, they're not just... They're identifying multiple sources of debt perhaps, you know? It could be credit debt, it could be student loan debt. I can't say that, you know, we have been tracking recently the amount of appointments where somebody identified a student loan debt. So in September, we know that 10% of appointments, somebody identified student loan debt as something that they wanted to tackle.
Great. And to the extent you have this information, you know, you could always just send it over.
Of course.
What percentage of people... You may not, based on the answer you gave, you may not have an answer for this, but I'll ask anyway for the record. What percentage of people are holding debt for their own student loans? And what percentage have student debt on behalf of a family member or third party?
I'm not sure if I have the breakdown of that debt. I can say that one in six New Yorkers we know, New York City residents, have student loan debt.
Yep. All right. My third question is, what type of training does a Financial Empowerment Center counselor receive?
So let me pass that question over to my colleague Heidi, who can more accurately describe the training.
Thank you for that question. At higher financial empowerment centers, counselors go through a CUNY-approved certification, financial counseling certification process. They are certified at the end of it, so they have to take the course and they have to pass the course. Then on a quarterly basis, we run trainings for all of our Financial Empowerment Center counselors as a group. And then we have specialty topics, and in fact, student loans has been the topic of this fall. So we work with our partners across the city and the state, including Community Service Society, New York State Department of Financial Services, and Student Borrow Protection Center, so colleagues here in this room. And they run monthly trainings as subject matter experts on particular topics so that the counselors are as proficient and as educated as they can be in this emerging world.
Is it fair to say that there's a good, a decent percent? To the extent you can ascribe a percentage, what percentage of the folks who get training have a background in student loan debt? Because that's like a whole beast of its own, if you will.
Well, sorry, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, I guess folks who are getting training have, in their training, are they getting exposure to student loan debt? I know that you mentioned that they are. I'd like to know if that's something, to an extent, has that been happening recently? And is there a goal to continue that into their training, implementing that into their training moving forward?
So I think we started implementing this into the training prior to the pandemic. So it's been for a significant amount of time now, and it certainly is our goal to continue doing it going forward. For us, as I mentioned in my testimony, we recognize that student loan debt has an impact on consumers, has an impact on New Yorkers overall. So it's, for us, it's significant that New Yorkers know they can come to our services and get help, and that our counselors are prepared to provide that help.
Thank you for that. Have these financial counselors received additional training to address possible changes to the federal student loan repayment plan and federal student loan debt relief?
Yes. As I mentioned, they have been doing monthly trainings. They've been scheduled November, December, and January to keep up with the recent federal student loan changes.
And you said this happens monthly, or...?
Monthly.
Thank you. I'm going to turn over some questions to my colleagues here. I know Chio Sei may have some questions, and then bring it back to me. Take your time. You have five minutes.
Oh, thank you. I just have a quick question. And this is in relation to how this initiative would work, especially within our schools. A lot of our public schools teach geometry and calculus and a bunch of subjects that some people may deem important. Maybe they are, but I think student loans and the information about student loans is also important. So as you know, most students are forced into taking out loans for school without fully understanding the repercussions, what outreach will be done or is being done by our city to high school students about loans.
Thank you for the question, council member, and I am certainly in agreement that student loan debt is something that increasingly...
that student loan debt is something that increasingly has to be focused for New Yorkers, or essential, or let me better phrase it, is recognizing that student loans are a reality at this current point in time and that we have to be prepared for it. From, from our perspective, our financial empowerment centers are located at community-based organizations, and they work one-on-one with clients that, that come to those locations, or also do in-person services. From, our agency conducts an extreme amount of outreach, a lot of outreach on, on our financial empowerment centers, and over 700 events since 2019. We do marketing campaigns, you might see our subway squares up or other high-visibility street furniture that we utilize. So we are, we are actively working to make sure folks come to our, our financial empowerment centers. In terms of schools, however, I don't necessarily, I believe that most of that kind of preparation and training might happen through certain DOE programs, such as like FAFSA, for example, and, and helping folks fill those out. That said, I think we're always happy to work with our, our community-based organizations to make sure that we're bringing tips on, on how to best tackle certain issues like debt and improving savings and student loan debt, but also driving folks and even, and their parents to come visit one of our student, one of our financial empowerment centers.
Thank you. A follow-up question-
Yes.
About your, you said there are financial literacy centers?
Financial, our program is, is financial empowerment centers.
Financial empowerment centers.
Yeah.
Do you think I could get a list from you guys on the financial empowerment centers that you collaborate with, some of the CBOs that you work with in my district?
Of course. I, I would love to provide that list, and, and we would certainly appreciate if you could share that with your constituents. I think for, for us, those financial empowerment centers are a valued resource. Since, since 2008, we've helped reduce debt in New York City by $90 million. We've helped increase savings for New Yorkers by close, I think, by close to $11 million or $12 million. So for us, I, I think the, is, is one of our most significant programs that we care deeply about and want to make sure New Yorkers utilize.
Thank you. And for the record, geometry and calculus is important. I use calculus every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Chi. I, I wish I could say the same. Do my colleagues have questions at the moment? All right. Sorry. And, sorry, good luck to acknowledge that our council member De La Rosa has also joined us. I will get back to the empowerment centers briefly, want to walk it back a bit to, to another question I have. Under what circumstances would a financial counselor refer a student loan borrower to another agency, to which agencies or individuals typically referred?
Let me start by saying, I guess, that our financial empowerment counselors are there to work with the client throughout their, you know, throughout the process of consolidating their loans, getting them to, to apply for, for example, public service loan forgiveness, or, or other ways to, to deal with adjusting their payment plans. Additionally, we do, we do refer folks at times to other services, such as free legal services that they might need. That's a significant, also outcome for, for New Yorkers. And, and I think the particular resource that my colleague is mentioning to me right now is NILAG, for example, in that sense. I don't, I, maybe if you could help drill down for me, council member, on what specific agencies you thought, you think might be helpful for getting referrals for?
No, my question is, to which agencies are folks are coming to? To which agencies are financial counselors referring borrowers that are before you to other agencies?
I think, I think typically, again, it's, you know, typically agencies might be referring clients to us, actually.
Okay.
DH, DHS, for example, might send us clients. I know we have partnerships with SBS where we, we get clients, so it's the other way around, perhaps.
All right. Thank you for that. By the way, I used to work at NILAG for two years.
Oh, great.
So they're doing great work over there. So going back to now, some outreach. Given the student loan debt crisis across New York City, what has the Mayor's Office of Financial Empowerment done to enhance the outreach to student loan borrowers? And specifically, you know, I, we are aware that DCWP's Student Loan Debt Vulnerable Borrower Series found that New Yorkers from neighborhoods with lower incomes are more likely to have student loan debt and collections. As a result, has reporting led to changes in outreach within those neighborhoods?
Thank you for, for the question, council member. DCWP's Office of Financial Empowerment, or our agency overall, has, you know, have we engaged in multiple efforts over the years to, to empower New Yorkers with more information around student loan debt and get them directed to the right resources? I think one of the most things, one of the things we've done most recently is promote the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Waiver and the Biden administration's debt cancellation plans, but for the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Waiver, we were able to create content and disseminate it through all, to all the city's employees, to nonprofits, you know, identifying, identifying folks in New York City that would be able to apply for this waiver and get their student loan debt forgiven, hopefully. We also, more recently, were able to do a number of web seminars with, with city employees who could qualify for PSLF, and that, and emailed messages also to over 300,000 employees in New York City. In the field, we have used this data as well to help target our marketing campaigns and our, and our on-the-ground boots, so to speak, of where we're doing presentations and outreach events for, for New Yorkers. So we use, we use the data that we've, we've collected, and we use that to target our outreach.
So it's fair to say that outreach has been performed in areas as those mentioned by the Student Loan Debt Vulnerable Borrower Series?
Yes, so that's correct. I mean, we, we use our resources strategically to ensure that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck, so to speak, and make sure that the people that need these resources and services are, are getting that information in their hands.
And is there a commitment by DCWP by continuing to enhance this outreach specifically in those areas?
I think outreach is always going to be a fundamental component of the work that we do at DCWP.
Thank you for that. How could, look, you mentioned a lot, right? You're doing a lot. That being said, how could the MOFE expand their outreach to disproportionately impacted communities? What resources do you need to make this possible in addition to what you have mentioned?
Thank you, council member. I think, I think we're always willing to explore more partnerships around expanding outreach and education for our financial empowerment centers. It's including working with council offices, and that goes for a lot of our, our services. For example, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that free tax prep, tax season is coming up. We offer free tax prep services, and we would always welcome working closely with the council on that as well. I think this partnership for that reason on legislation or outreach is, is significant. For, on the question about resources, you know, I think we're always happy to have a discussion about how we could expand capacity for our services and bring more New Yorkers into the fold of our financial empowerment services.
Thank you for that. My other question is, how could MOFE be more proactive about providing services to those who are disproportionately impacted but who may not seek our services necessarily?
Thank you, council member. I just would make one point of clarification, that the Office of Financial Empowerment is an office under the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. It's not a separate mayor's office, but I think, I, I think it's always a challenge in terms of depth and breadth of outreach to, to reach certain communities that have, have a lack of access, for example, to digital capacity, right? Or have maybe seniors and might not have familiarity with city resources. I think that's something that we're always working to identify new partners in and, and new mechanisms, right, of, of how we can make sure that folks, folks feel that the resources are available and that they're available for them, too. I know one challenge we've had historically is, is sometimes when you say, oh, this is a free financial counseling, and people are like, free? What does that mean? But, but for us, you know, it's paid for by the city, let's say, one point, but it's, it's a really valuable resource, where we've put a lot of, a lot of effort and work into making sure that these folks are certified financial counselors and provide really great services to New Yorkers. So I think all these are, are challenges that we, we, we have to overcome to make sure that New Yorkers come to these centers.
Well, thank you. And you mentioned seniors. How are you reaching seniors? This is a challenge.
Yeah, well, we, we do a lot of, we do a lot of work at, at senior centers, for example. We, we partner with sister agencies like DIFDA, of course. I, I think, I think this administration has been particularly adamant that agencies should not be operating in silos, and breaking down those walls has facilitated us being able to communicate more with the constituents we want to get in touch with.
Thank you for that. How does MOF, MOFE engage with students currently enrolled in higher education programs at their institutions?
I think similarly, I, I think, I go back to the marketing campaigns that we do on, you know, that might be on subway lines that, that go through the neighborhoods where we see institutions of higher education, or where we see student loan debt might be prevalent. I know the commissioner herself and folks on my team have done events at higher education institutions to help folks know that this is a resource that's available to them, because I think, of course, like, I know when I was a student, I didn't know the realities of student loan debt necessarily, and having somebody come to my institution, I feel like, is important, and being able to talk to somebody through that, through those questions and, and get directed to services is, is important.
Thank you. So you've, you've discussed the way you've reached older adults and students at institutions. What about folks who aren't housed? You know, that's sort of, what efforts are made to, to reach them?
Thank you, council member. I think, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we do have referral and communications with the Department of Homeless Services to make sure that folks, especially as they're transitioning out, are able to, to get some financial empowerment resources and services. I think that's one of our, our main partner pathways.
Thank you. According to-
Council member, I just want to add one more point as well, and I would be remiss to not mention this, but we've also are looking into an expansion of our financial empowerment center resources under the mayor's economic blueprint to provide financial empowerment services to runaway youth as well.
Thank you for that. Do all financial empowerment centers offer their services virtually and in person? And what type, what, what do you find to be the more common way of access?
I think, I think it really is a mix. I mean, we have 26 in-person sites, and then there's a mix of, of others that provide over-the-phone counseling. Traditionally, in-person is what people have utilized the most, albeit with, with the pandemic and, and certain restrictions there, phone service has taken on a, a larger role. I do think also that, that telephonic service probably helps the, the folks that are working during the day, for example, and able to step out and have a quick chat with their financial counselor, although we do offer evening hours and weekend hours, too. So I think we've definitely considered, you know, definitely the time, the time dynamic as well for, for our clients.
Are these empowerment centers, would you say, equitably distributed through the city, or is there like a, or are they more heavily weighted in one area versus another? Just want to make sure that access is, is important.
Let me pass that question over to my colleague Katie.
Thank you for that question. Pre-COVID, we identified 16 areas in the city that had the highest financial distresses, so the shares of unbanked residents, shares of residents without liquid savings, those that were in debt collections, and access to revolving credit. So of those 16 areas, our financial empowerment centers covered 13 of them, and some of the other centers are, for example, we have one in our DCWP's office in 42 Broadway, which is the financial district, and not one of the 16 areas, but really they, they cover as much as they can of these at-risk neighborhoods.
And I would say that they are equitably distributed throughout all the boroughs. Every borough has at least two financial empowerment centers, and, and, you know, many have many more than that.
Thank you. According to the department's 2021 report, quote-unquote, "Weighed Down: New Yorkers Share How Student Debt Is Affecting Their Lives." According to that report, 28% of student loan borrowers did not know whether they participated in an income-driven repayment plan. How does the Office of Financial Empowerment aim to close the knowledge, knowledge gap for student loan borrowers who may struggle to understand the loan repayment process?
Thank you for that question. You know, certainly coming out of the last few years with a payment pause, we do have an opportunity now to speak to borrowers who are in default. So we are concentrating our marketing efforts in re-engaging with those borrowers as they start the Fresh Start programs or the upcoming income-driven repayment plans.
Is this income, and the income-driven repayment plan is also part of, is it also part of the training for financial counselors?
Yes, council member. So when a, when a client does come in, I think that's one of the things that we're, we're looking to, to work with the clients, if they have student loan debt, I should say, you know, how we can consolidate their loans, what, what programs might be available for them, including income-driven repayment plans, to ensure that there's a lesser, ideally to, to mitigate any burdens on their, on their financial health.
Have they seen uptick from their marketing efforts?
I think, generally, yes. I, I think we, we find our marketing efforts to be successful, and I think, you know, I mentioned the 10% number about, about September, and that, that is an uptick over the previous months in terms of how many folks are coming in and wanting to speak to student loan debt issues.
Thank you. The federal student loan repayment pause is set to expire on December 31, 2022. That might change, but assuming it isn't, are there additional resources available for student loan borrowers who'll be making payments for the first time? And will there be any changes to outreach in the coming months?
I think, council member, I think we are, you know, we, we actively monitor the federal situation across a slew of programs, especially as it relates to student loan debt. For us, I think we are, we're going to be monitoring very closely what happens in January and succeeding months, and I think similarly, we'll be making sure to, making sure to drive New Yorkers to our financial empowerment centers. And I mentioned, for example, an expansion with respect to runaway youth. We also are committing to an expansion as well at workforce development centers for financial empowerment services. So I think we are, we want to bring more of these resources out, particularly as, you know, the point that you raised well, it's that, that there's a new reality coming up from the federal government that we have to adjust to as well.
Are the efforts concentrated, given that it's less than two months away, or, and I guess, how does that effort look like? That is the effort to reach these folks, especially with the impending, you know, expiration?
I think it's, it's, I think, yeah, I think that in terms of our expansion, that, that should be coming out hopefully in the near future, but in terms of like outreach work, that's, that's ongoing. We, we are committed to outreach, as I mentioned earlier, as a fundamental component of, of how we serve New Yorkers and making sure that they come out. And I think for our, for our, I know for everyone here on this dais, that the federal situation is something that we continue to monitor to make sure that this agency adjusts correctly to any needs that come from New Yorkers.
Is the agency contemplating spending resources towards having ads being placed around so that folks know that that deadline is on its way?
I think that's something that, you know, we can certainly look into. We have already worked to, to disseminate a lot of information out, particularly around the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program. But yeah, I think for us, it's always something that we're willing to consider of how to, how to further create awareness about financial empowerment centers and student loan debt. And that could touch on many ways, too. I think social media is increasingly a mechanism that we can use to reach more New Yorkers in a very relatively easy way.
That's great. Intro 366 requires the commissioner to submit aggregated data related to visits and use of the city's financial empowerment centers. Is there any additional information that you believe would be useful for the report that is not listed in the bill?
Thank you, council member. I think for us, as I mentioned in my testimony, we would always be, I think, through the legislative process, we were happy to work through suggestions with the council on how we could tackle specific data points and outcomes that'd be serviced, that'd be helpful for a reporting requirement. I know, you know, as, as, as folks might testify to later, this public information is very vital for developing policy, and so I think we want to work with, with, with the council and ensure that we are, we, we have good, good and strong data that we're reporting. I do want to mention, though, as I, that in terms of our financial empowerment centers, like, each, each site is very, has varying capacity, varying amount of services they provide, based on contracts that, you know, we've worked on with the providers on them. So at times, site-specific data might not always be painting a full picture, so we would definitely want to make sure with council that we find ways to, to provide that context to anybody who's looking at that data. For example, I wouldn't want somebody to see one site and say, this is a very low volume, and see another site, this is a very high volume, but we find that it reflects what clients are asking for as well.
I guess my question then is, give me an example of a low-volume site, which, by the way, would be important data for us to collect, anyway, but what would, well, give me, give me example, if you can, of a site where it would be difficult to collect this information?
I wouldn't say it's difficult, council member. I'd say it's just, you know, certain sites have varying hours, and, you know, for example, a certain amount of hours, you can only serve a certain amount of clients. That said, we are reviewing monthly of like where, where the client volume is, how we can adjust hours, how can we adjust staff, to ensure that the services meet the needs. adjust hours, how can we adjust staff, to ensure that the services meet the needs, you know? That, I think, is important for how we strategically use resources.
Thank you. Currently, what federal and state debt relief legislation do you support? What reforms are you aiming to see in the future?
I'm not sure if there's any specifically that comes to mind. I think I would have to talk with our state legislative affairs or federal legislative affairs colleagues to better understand what positions we have on those.
Does the administration support canceling student debt?
I think in the, in the past, we have, we have in our reports described cancellation of student debt as a, as a possible recourse for consumers. In terms of, I think, the mayor's office would also need to follow up with you on specific positions or on those proposals.
Thank you for that. Are you aware of any data that characterizes the amount of debt incurred by student loan borrowers based on their professional industry?
No, councilmember, we're not familiar.
And I have two more questions to go. Does MOFE engage in any outreach to warn New Yorkers about potentially fraudulent educational programs?
I think what we, our outreach on consumer protection focuses on is how to avoid certain scams or how to avoid paying for, how to be preventative in terms of paying for fees that are not necessary. So that is, you know, that's one of the core tenets of our work.
Yeah. And I'm, thank you for that. Scams in education are rising, however, right? And I think that for folks being able to see for what it is with the old naked eye here, I think it would be valuable, because there are a lot of folks that are getting scammed. And if there's a pattern of scamming within education, that could be helpful. It would be, it would be great to be adding that to your repertoire or whatever.
No, I agree, council member. And for that reason, you know, we were particularly supportive of councilmember Kagan's legislation to provide disclosures to consumers to, to ensure that they have this information at their fingertips. And I think as, you know, as we work the legislative process, and if it becomes law, it's something that we would wrap into our components of education.
And the, that outreach regarding potentially fraudulent educational programs or just scams more broadly, is that being done through multilingual, through multiple languages?
Yes, I think for, for the, for all the work that we do, or that's financial empowerment, consumer protection, or worker protection, language access is key. I think oftentimes, in certain pieces of literature, we translate past the 10 languages. So I think language access is always going to be a part of our work. That is significant.
Thank you. Have you collected data already on the volume visits for different sites of the centers, right?
Excuse me to clarify, is that the number of sessions conducted by site?
Yeah, so I think what I heard on the record, and you can correct it if I interpret it wrong, is that on a month-by-month basis, you determine the people, the volume of people that visit these centers. And you may have low-volume and high-volume sites. Do you have that, that data?
I think, yeah, I think that's, that would, that would inform a review. But I would have to talk with our team who run that program to see what specifically they have.
Thank you. Do you provide information to student borrowers about their recourse if they have been defrauded by an educational institution?
I think that in terms of defrauding, I think we really have to look at the fact patterns and the particulars of a case. I know, you know, if we seek them, yeah, I would have to leave it at that. It's difficult to say.
For sure. What organizations, if any, does MOFE partner with to assist New Yorkers who are burdened with student debt? I think you mentioned NILAG as one.
Yes, NILAG's a great partner. We have some partners here, Community Service Society, EdCap, Student Borrow Protection Center. And yes, many of our partners in the financial empowerment centers are excellent, they're subject matter experts themselves at this point, and play a critical role in our student loan distress supports.
I would like to thank the administration for your testimony. We are moving to public testimony next.
Thank you. We will give the administration a couple of minutes to wrap up and then move over to public testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now turn to public testimony. I'd like to remind everyone that unlike our typical council hearings, we will count, call virtual witnesses one by one to testify. And they can begin once the sergeants have called time. If you are here in person, once we call your name, you can come up to the table and have a seat and begin testimony once everyone has settled in. We will start with Notion Hawk from Young Invincibles, who is joining us via Zoom. You can go ahead when the sergeants call time.
Time has begun.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Notion Hawk, and I am the New York Policy Coordinator at Young Invincibles. Young Invincibles' mission is to amplify the voices of young adults ages 18 to 34 in the political process and expand economic opportunity for our generation. I want to first thank the New York City Council, especially the Committee on State and Federal Legislation, and Chair Shawna Bro, and the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, and Chair Marjorie Velazquez for the opportunity to testify at today's hearing. I am here today to share my story and insight on the need for student relief to ensure economic success for our current and future generations of young adults. The weight of student debt has kept millions of my fellow New York young adults from buying a car or home, finishing college, or even having a decent quality of life. I graduated from Stony Brook University, a SUNY, in 2020, and with my master's in social work from Columbia University in 2021, with a significant amount of student debt. I was a first-generation student and the first and only person in my family to still have a master's degree. Despite my privilege to attend and even complete my education, it came with an intense challenge of taking on massive loans, $30,000 to be exact, just to make ends meet with my tuition. The reality is, I financed my education with debt. Now in my early twenties, when I should be saving to build a better future, I'm putting all my money to save up towards paying off my loans to avoid the risk of delinquency when student loan repayment resumes. In a survey done in 2021 by the New York City Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, a statistic that was mentioned earlier today as well, approximately 1 in 8 New Yorkers with student loans were overdue on loan payments. And 1 in 5 had made a late payment at least once in the past 12 months. My story isn't unique. Defaulting on student loans risks our credit score, which is critical to gaining any asset such as property, homeownership, or even getting a loan to lease or buy a car. The strain on our credit score is a catalyst for creating more barriers to building generational wealth, especially for folks like me who are POC and come from low-income backgrounds. Not to mention, student loans have a much higher delinquency rate than any other type of household debt. Student debt forgiveness provides relief and a path to financial freedom for many students and individuals from low-income backgrounds. The good news is that there is an existing solution to carve the path to a debt-free education in New York. Thank you to the City Council for passing the New Deal for CUNY, which protects the quality of education by aiming to restore tuition-free universities and increase the number of faculty and staff. Although the City Council has already passed this resolution, the work isn't over. And I highly encourage our council members to continue to advocate for the bill, especially with the State Committee on Higher Education. This has to be passed at the state level. Once passed, it will provide a template for all universities across the state, including SUNY, to demonstrate a tuition-free approach to education that will empower and benefit students in New York. It offers immigrants, struggling young adults, and individuals from low-income backgrounds access to a rigorous college education that will improve the path to equity, social mobility, and in the end, building generational wealth, ultimately leading to economic success for our young adults. Thank you for allowing me speak today and share my experiences on how student debt is a barrier to building generational wealth. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Notion Hawk. I would also like to recognize Amanda Farias, who has joined us virtually.
Thank you. I will now call Shanna Talarico to testify via Zoom. And following Shanna, we will have Nancy Nierman, Winston Berkman Breen, and Jane Fox.
Chair Velazquez, Chair Abreu, council members and staff, good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection and the Committee on State and Federal Legislation about student debt as a barrier to generational wealth. My name is Shawna Talarico. I'm a senior supervising attorney with the Consumer Protection Unit at the New York Legal Assistance Group, or NILAG. And I submit this testimony in support of introduction 366 and 321. Founded in 1990, NILAG is a leading civil legal services organization that combats economic, racial, and social injustice by advocating for New Yorkers experiencing poverty or in crisis. NILAG's Consumer Protection Unit attorneys also work on and litigate issues related to consumer debt, including federal and private student loans. Our Consumer Protection Unit is also regularly handles, as we heard today, legal referrals from financial counselors who work with New Yorkers through the financial empowerment centers, and we are an EdCap partner. A college education is supposed to ensure, if not upward mobility and financial security, then at least the opportunity to pursue those ends. This is a reasonable expectation of the significant investment of time, energy, and often sacrifice that higher education demands. Yet, for many student loan borrowers, including many of NILAG's clients, the necessity of debt is both the result of a lack of generational wealth and an obstacle to building future generational wealth. Higher education access in the U.S. has historically been limited by race, sex, and class. Understanding this history helps us see a path for today's student debt crisis and its disparate impacts across race, gender, and class and their intersections. Student debt limits borrowers' ability to access capital for major purchases, most notably buying a home, continuing education, and starting a business, activities with a high potential to increase a person's likelihood of financial security and wealth building. With the median student loan debt outpacing median income levels, it becomes increasingly difficult for borrowers to make these kinds of investments in their futures. Access to capital is blocked off or made much more difficult to one generation, and that difficulty compounds, leaving the next generation with greater obstacles. Certainly, we've seen these disparities play out in real time through our clients' lived experiences. Take, for example, Melissa, who did everything right. She attended and graduated from college and now works as a teacher employed by New York City's Department of Education. She's a partner and two children. Melissa had to fund most of her education through federal and private student loans. For the private student loans, the lender required her co-signer, and her mother, Sherry, stepped in to help. After graduation, the private student loan debt became unmanageable, and Melissa fell into default. The lender had insurance and was made whole on the loan, but then a putative debt buyer stepped in and sued Melissa in court. Melissa had very strong defenses to the debt buyer's claim because the debt buyer did not have proof that it even owned the debt. The damages claimed by the debt buyer was also unsupported, was also supported by dubious proof. Nevertheless, Melissa chose to fight the case, chose not to fight the case, excuse me. She did not want to put her mother's only asset, her home, at risk. Melissa entered into a many-years-long payment plan, settling the debt buyer's dubious claims and delaying her own family's plan to invest in other assets such as a home or her own children's college education. Many of our clients have attended for-profit schools. They are preyed on by these schools with promises of better career opportunities only be saddled with overwhelming debt upon graduation and no better job prospects. These schools often prey on students' need to finance their education and push students into federal loans for which the school depends on to keep its doors open, to fund most of the tuition, and then push students into predatory private loans that are designed to fail, to fund the gap not covered by federal loans. NILAG has assisted countless clients who graduate from for-profit schools and then immediately fall into debt on both their federal and private student loans. This is due to many factors, including the predatory nature of the loans and the lack of clear and concise information about federal student loan repayment options. To boot, scam student loan companies often step in and capitalize on borrowers' distress, inducing them to sign up for paid-for services that are free and steer borrowers often to options that leave them in even worse financial situations. From experience, we know that most of our student loan clients are first-generation college students and/or women who identify as BIPOC. All of our clients are trying to build careers and obtain financial security for themselves and their families. It is imperative that New York enact policies that support these goals. NILAG applauds the aim of 621, which would create a private right of action for an individual who is scammed by a predatory student loan relief company. It is important for consumers to be empowered to take action against companies that misrepresent their services to their detriment. For 366, NILAG hopes that more transparency-
Time has expired.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. And just a reminder that you can also submit written testimony at testimony@council.nyc.gov. I will now call Nancy Nierman, Winston Berkman Breen, and Jane Fox to testify. You can come up to the table and go ahead whenever you're ready. You can get started whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony to the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, student debt as a barrier to general wealth. My name is Nancy Nierman. I work at the Community Service Society of New York as Associate Director of the Education Debt Consumer Assistance Program, also known as EdCap. My testimony will focus on the need to have access to student loan data, intro 366, and ensure student debt relief companies provide borrowers with proper disclosures and that borrowers have a private right to action against bad actors, intro 621. In terms of a little context, CSS is an informed, independent nonprofit, an unwavering voice for the positive action on behalf of low-income New Yorkers. CSS draws on a 175-year history of excellence in addressing the root causes of economic disparity through research, advocacy, litigation, and innovative program models. In 2019, CSS created the Education Debt Consumer Assistance Program to help New Yorkers struggling with higher education debt. Through its central helpline, one-on-one counseling services, EdCap helps individuals navigate the very complex student loan system to maximize repayment options. In terms of intro 366, we believe there is a need for increased student borrower data reporting. We support the creation of a biennial student loan distress report as required by this law. The borrowers, from firsthand experience, we understand the need to have accurate and detailed information on borrowers who are being impacted by student debt. We know that communities are impacted differently, and identifying communities in distress is critical for programs like EdCap to target outreach and offer direct consumer assistance. Through our unheard-third survey, for example, we have found that in New York City, people of color, notably Black and Latinx women, are much more likely to shoulder student loan debt. At the federal level, it has been extremely challenging to obtain borrower data. In fact, the most we can obtain is general data regarding the federal government's student loan portfolios. Having access to a report that has ZIP code data, for example, on a consistent basis, would be helpful in identifying long-term trends and issues emerging for New York City's borrowers. borrowers, and would allow us to target our research more efficiently to those who need it most. It is similarly imperative for the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection to help, to get the help and resources needed to effectively carry out this mandate. It will also be imperative for the City Council, DCWP, and New York City's higher education institutions to work together and ensure the required data points are in fact available, and if not, to build the infrastructure needed to capture and report on the outlined data points. In terms of intro 621, it's critical to protect student borrowers from student debt relief companies engaging in harmful practices, and it's vital for borrowers to have a private right of action. Student loan borrowers often struggle to properly manage and repay their debt. The levels of stress and distress often lead to them being targeted by unscrupulous student loan debt relief companies that not only take their money but leave them worse off than when they started. The federal government, through its student loan servicers, are ultimately responsible for assisting borrowers with any issues related to their debt, including access to repayment options, loan cancellation, or discharge. We support the requirement that student loan relief companies provide borrowers disclosure about the federal government's services. We would further support additional requirements that make it clear that student debt relief companies, in an attempt to lure customers, cannot deceive borrowers by implying they are affiliated with the federal government. It is often the case that borrowers are made to believe these companies are working for the U.S. Department of Education and are trying to implement a specific federal relief program. Descriptions of these programs are often misleading and inaccurate. In conclusion, as a program that is focused solely on the issue of student debt, we welcome the opportunity to share our input and support for proposed laws that you're hearing about today. We see firsthand the struggles that borrowers encounter when faced with debt burdens in an economy that has been battered first by the pandemic and now by historically high inflation rates. Any measures that are put in place to provide additional data, and particularly to curtail the explosion of unscrupulous student debt relief organizations who charge exorbitant fees for simple tasks and who do not fully understand the federal student loan system, often placing borrowers in financially harmful situations which aren't always correctable, is a win for consumers. Thank you again.
All right. Can you hear me? Great. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairs Velazquez and Abreu, and members of the committee. My name is Winston Berkman Breen, and I'm the Policy Counsel and Deputy Director for Advocacy at the Student Borrow Protection Center, a national nonprofit organization focused on alleviating the burden of student debt at the federal, state, and local level. Prior to joining the SPPC, I was the student loan ombudsman for the state of New York, housed at the Department of Financial Services, the state's financial regulator, where I was also the Director of Consumer Advocacy. I was a staff attorney at NILAG's Consumer Protection Unit prior to that, where I was a Financial Empowerment Center free legal service provider, addressing student loan issues. It's been great to hear so much about NILAG today. For many years, the SPPC has been a proud partner of the New York City Department of Consumer and Worker Protection and its Office of Financial Empowerment, training and supporting its financial counselors in their student loan work and advising on the agency's research and reporting on student debt. It's from these perspectives that I offer my testimony today. I'll be brief, and will submit written testimony with more details about the student debt crisis in New York. But first, I want to applaud the City Council's recognition that there is a role for local government in addressing the student debt crisis, and for recognizing that this crisis is an important economic and racial justice issue. New York City is leading the nation in terms of showing how cities can respond and tackle the issue of student debt. I'll just make three brief points. First, having place-based data to show how this crisis plays out across our neighborhoods is critical to affecting change, as is pairing these data with local service provision and policy recommendations. We know that having student debt inhibits borrowers' ability to build intergenerational wealth, that Black and Brown communities have to borrow more often and in larger amounts, and that their repayment outcomes are worse than for white households. The Federal Consumer Financial Protection Bureau reports that 90% of Black students and 72% of Latino students who complete four-year programs borrow to attend college in comparison to 66% of white students. An analysis from the Jane Family Institute shows that three-quarters of loans owned by borrowers living in Black communities now exceed their original balance compared to only half of those in white neighborhoods. We know this, but seeing this map against New York City neighborhoods is a powerful wake-up call and policy tool. The reports that DCWP has issued in the way that it has used its research insights to inform its borrower education and outreach programs have been replicated by researchers and local governments across the country, and we've been honored to advise on these reports in the past. I'm therefore encouraged to see intro 366 and urge the council to work closely with the DCWP to finalize a reporting format that will best serve New York City residents, as the agency has deep expertise in student loans. Second, there are great opportunities for local governments to engage in consumer protection, and again, New York City leads the way. This year alone, the DCWP has finalized two actions against for-profit schools that defrauded New York City students, and the agency has long-regulated debt collection. I therefore applaud intro 621, which would help ensure no New York City resident unknowingly pays for student loan assistance that they could receive for free. It's particularly powerful that the bill includes a private right of action, which allows for borrowers to enforce their own rights in court when they've been violated. I do want to note that the role of consumer protection is particularly important because borrower education and financial empowerment, while critical, can't overcome some of the predatory behaviors and discriminatory structures that borrowers currently have to navigate. Finally, the council can address the student debt crisis not just as a policymaking body, but as an employer and market participant. This year, we've been proud to partner with DCWP to educate New York City residents, especially city employees, about the Public Service Loan Forgiveness Program. Under this federal program, student loan borrowers working for governments and nonprofits can have their debts canceled after 10 years of service. This outreach builds on work the council did last year when it passed a local law requiring employers to inform their employees about their eligibility for student debt cancellation programs. There are several ways that the council can use its formal and informal tools to help borrowers, many of whom are city employees. With that, I thank you for your ongoing attention to this matter and for convening today's hearing. I urge the council to continue to vigorously engage with the issue of student debt and to think creatively about all of the policy solutions it can bring to bear, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
You can go ahead.
Great. First, I'd like to thank Committee Chair Velazquez, Committee Chair Abreu for holding this hearing today and giving me the opportunity to speak on this critical issue facing New Yorkers. My name is Jane Fox. I'm a staff attorney at the Legal Aid Society and a member of the Association of Legal Aid Attorneys, UAW Local 2325. And today, I'm speaking on behalf of ALAA, not on behalf of the Legal Aid Society. I'm also currently a fellow at the Student Borrower Protection Center. ALAA is a union of over 2,700 attorneys, social workers, paralegals, parent advocates, and other legal workers that fight tirelessly for the civil rights and dignity of low-income New Yorkers. As other people have noted, student loans are now the largest form of consumer credit in the nation outside of the mortgage market, with Americans owing more in student loan debt than they do on auto loans, credit cards, or home equity lines of credit. And the average student loan bill is nearly $400 a month per borrower. Student debt impacts all of our union members, whether they are currently paying their loans or have foregone accumulating savings in order to finish paying their loans. Approximately two-thirds of our members have student loans, a significant number owe over $50,000, and a large segment owe over $200,000. Many of our members are the first generation in their families to hold undergraduate or graduate degrees, and many were Pell Grant recipients. For these members, taking on student debt was necessary to gain the educational credentials required to do this work. At the same time, student debt is a barrier that keeps our members from retaining the wealth they have earned for the next generation. We are at a crucial moment. While the CARES Act student loan pause benefited many of our members, a share of our members hold loans that were ineligible for the pause, therefore requiring them to continue making payments during the national crisis of the COVID-19 pandemic. And likewise, many of our members are eligible for student debt relief for the student debt relief program proposed by the Biden Administration in August 2022. However, due to current litigation freezing the program, no borrowers have actually realized any debt cancellation under this program to date. As we head into 2023 and the proposed end of the pause, most of our members will once again have the burden of monthly loan payments while facing historic levels of inflation and cost of living increases alongside stagnant wages. And it is not lost on us that the Legal Aid Society, where many of our members work, is experiencing a fiscal crisis, where there are concerns about being able to afford our increased organizational needs. The fiscal pressures are felt within our organization from the top down. Simultaneously, we are experiencing record levels of attrition, particularly among our mid-career members. Almost half of all ALAA members leave the work they love before 10 years for better-paying jobs in firms, other nonprofits, or government. And attrition is highest amongst attorneys of color, who often have more student debt and less support to pay off their loans. When talented legal service workers leave their jobs because their student debt makes working in legal services unaffordable, the low-income New Yorkers we serve are deprived of talented and experienced representation. One of the most important paths for our members to relieve this financial pressure and build intergenerational wealth is to pursue debt cancellation through public service loan forgiveness, PSLF. And while PSLF offers a chance for public sector workers to fully discharge their loans after 10 years or more, it doesn't relieve the financial stressor of monthly student loan payments while working in a low-salary public sector position in an expensive city. As a result, our members have a great need for loan assistance programs that provide financial assistance to reduce their monthly student loan bills while they work towards PSLF. One such fund is the District Attorney and Indigent Legal Services Attorney Loan Forgiveness Program, otherwise known as DOLF, administered by the State Higher Education Services Corporation, which provides critical funding that allows our union members to stay in their jobs and make a career of public service. The DOLF program is aimed at mid-career attorneys carrying student loan debt and provides annual awards to offset monthly student loan payments. And it provides assistance to attorneys who have shown a four-year commitment to working in public service when they first apply, and it is often the sole support members have to pay their loans when they reach the middle of their careers and are simultaneously growing their families or caring for elders. There has not been an adjustment to either the annual award or the years of eligibility since the program began in 2009. Simply put, the DOLF program has not kept pace with the rise in cost of student loans or the rise in cost of living in New York State. Thank you. I am going to be submitting written testimony which-
You can finish.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. This legislative session, a bill has been introduced in Albany to increase the annual award and years of eligibility for the DOLF program under Senate Bill S1176, an Assembly Bill A5720, sponsored by Jessica Ramos in the Senate and Joanne Simon in the Assembly. An increase in DOLF funding would help reduce staff attrition amongst our members immeasurably, and with more DOLF funding, our members would have increased financial security in uncertain economic times. Decreasing the financial worries of our members can only benefit the communities they serve. When our members thrive, their work on behalf of low-income New Yorkers thrives. Furthermore, DOLF funding would help us recruit talented staff for our member organizations to replace those who have left due to attrition. We asked that the City Council pass a resolution asking the state legislature to pass and the governor to sign this bill into law to ensure that our members can access these funds to ease the burden of their student loans and remain in vital public sector jobs that provide New Yorkers with critical legal services. On a personal note, I just want to add that as a recipient of the DOLF fund, while I was working towards PSLF, this money helped me immeasurably to support my family and to stay in public service until I achieved public service loan forgiveness for myself in 2020. So I thank you to the committee, and I will take any questions if there are-
No, thank you. Since I know you're with 2325, I was a local there as well. Do you think that pay parity would help also alleviate student loan?
Absolutely. Pay parity would be the most important thing that the City Council could do to support our members with their student loan debt. An increase in salary obviously would support all of our members in paying their student loans, and the DOLF fund would be in addition to that.
I appreciate all of you for your expertise doing this each and every day. Thank you for your insightful testimonies, which were also very powerful. And I hereby adjourn today's hearing. I'm gaveling out.